I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I now call this city council regular meeting in City Hall, Council Chambers 3, United's First Street and Second Floor, Morgantown, West Virginia 26505 on Tuesday, January 7, 2025 at 7:00 PM.
Yes, Bill Kowecki?
Here.
Wheezy Michael?
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Here.
Danielle Trumbull?
Here.
Dave Harshbarger?
Here.
Brian Butcher?
Here.
Mayor Buganam?
Present. First we have the, uh, thank you by the way for that, first we have the approval of minutes from December 17th, 2024 of our regular meeting. Do we have any changes?
Press conference.
So we accept the meeting, uh, the meeting minutes as is, as presented. All right, onto correspondence, the first thing we have today, or the only thing we have today is a presentation of the neighborhood survey results. And our own Marvin Davis, our Geospatial Services Manager, if you'd be so kind, has to join us and tell us.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council, it's been a couple of months since I spoke with you last.
Just to give you a kind of an update, G I S Day was wildly successful, we had members throughout the day come by and talk to us, we even helped a few individuals get started with our permitting software and really happy to have seen the results of that. We also have several prospective students looking for internships even, so wildly successful, plan to do it next year and look forward to talking to you again in November. But today is kind of a offshoot of G I S Day as that was the day that we closed a long-running What's Your Neighborhood survey. So, since I started in 2019, the question of why and where are our neighborhoods has been brought up to me repeatedly. And it comes from two main branches of the, uh, of our city government. One is the desire to get more geography, more identity to the places within our city, ability to segment us better than our wards do because wards may define multiple neighborhoods and be able to best describe an area, so like, oh, this is over in First Ward, well, that could be First Ward as a ward, or it could be a neighborhood, what part of First Ward, what part of Suncrest, what part of Woodburn, what part of Saberton. And then additionally, as you all are aware from the work with the Ward and Boundary Commission, one of the longstanding, at least in my time working with the commission, has been, they have long desired to not bisect neighborhoods, so they want to know exactly where neighborhoods begin and end, that delineation to be able to best protect that neighborhood from being crossed by a potential ward. So we do have wards, or we do have neighborhoods defined, but they're usually by the Neighborhood Association Charter or historic data. That probably does not reflect what people consider their neighborhood to be anymore. And as I've learned with talking with many professionals in the realm of geography and planning, neighborhoods can change over time. The identity, the sense of place, that can all be factors that change and morph, and as people move or leave or come to end of the city, what they consider their neighborhood to be may be wildly different than those that were before them. So I thought this was a perfect opportunity to talk about public participation in G I S, engage citizens to participate within all the tools that we have at our disposal. And these are the results of that survey. And I'm being very careful to move my mouse in a way that I'll be able to not close this again. So just to give you the high level information, 225 total responses, a lot came in around G I S Day, so I think that was a really good event to draw interest to that. However, one drawback we had was points ended up all over the globe because when it said ask for your street address, some put Morgantown, West Virginia in, some just put 389 Spruce Street. Well, it would pick the first Spruce Street that was in this list, which could be in Germany or it could be in Australia, and it would put it there. So we did have to go in and make sure we added Morgantown, West Virginia to those addresses, so it put them in our neck of the woods anyway. Didn't know that, but we will know that going forward. Uh, we did have many responses outside of the city, the primary areas were Cheat Lake, Brookhaven, the North Hills Community, Glenmark, and one or a couple actually named Scott Avenue, um, out near Hazel's House of Hope. And then, um, the one thing I wanted to mention too, is this is a survey that I intend to do yearly, probably in the fall, around when students come back just to get kind of a mix, uh, mix of responses. But I'm hoping to also increase the responses above 225, as you'll see on the map in a minute, you'll notice there are gaps in the responses, I would like to try to fill those in, try to figure out where the people that live there consider their neighborhood to be. And also have a historic flow over time, what are these neighborhoods moving to, are they staying the same or are they changing? And just to give you the top 10 responses by neighborhood, South Park BioFar provided the most responses of 71. There was a tie for second place with First Ward and Greenmont providing 31 responses each. Suncrest came up with 17, and then the fifth one was other not listed, and several did put in what they thought their neighborhood was. And a few named the same one that was in the list, like I think one, one or two actually put in Upper South Park as a neighborhood, so South Park was an option, but they chose other. But I think in total, there were many more that went off that table, so I just stuck with the top 10. The link, that'll be at the end of the presentation, also a nice little QR code, has all the results. And this is one I think would be more interesting to city council, as a lot of you work with your neighborhood associations. The majority of responses to the survey was either no or I don't know when it comes to are you a member of a neighborhood association. So that may be an opportunity to engage your constituents to participate in their neighborhood, because that no may mean I didn't even know one existed, I'm not part of it. Or it may mean I don't have a neighborhood association, but maybe I need one. But the majority, let me hover over it just to make sure I give you the number, 53.8% of the responses, 121 of the 225. So I figured that would be of importance to city council as a lot of you engage your neighborhoods. And to finally give you, because I am the Geospatial Manager, I have to have a map somewhere in this presentation. Of course, on your printout, it does not move, this one does, and let me make sure my mouse stays connected to the screen, and I will pan around and zoom in here. So as I zoom in, these squares, as I didn't want to leave the actual points of people who responded, so I made sure to grid them in a way so that it would just show the majority responses and then label them so you know which one's which. We had several responses from Chancery Hill, South Park, Hope Crest, Greenmont, some in Greenmont answered South Park, I don't know if that's going to cause any conflict or not, I apologize if so. But, um, the one thing I wanted to mention too, if you noticed the solid black lines under those grids, those are actually the boundaries as we have them mapped currently. This is historic data that I had in my possession when I started here, and these have not changed. So if you notice, South Park's boundary stops, I think, around Maple Avenue on this map, but we worked with citizens, we talked to citizens, we knew, like, they, a lot of people south of there consider themselves to be South Park. This survey pretty much proves that, as those reds go way out above, way out beyond the Maple Avenue intersection. And since this is, mouse is not wanting to cooperate, I can't really pan around there, but good news, as in your But good news, as in your printout that you have in front of you and on the screen now in case anybody wants to snap that, this QR code will take you to a little dashboard that has just what you see here, which is the table or the chart of the results by neighborhood and the survey results to membership in a neighborhood association and the map you see before you. So, feel free to explore that, and if you have any questions, please let me know. Thank you all.
Yeah, I do.
Yes.
A couple. First of all, they responded by saying they really felt as though they lived within this particular neighborhood. Is that correct?
Yes. So, the survey was effectively, what's your address? What neighborhood do you consider yourself to be part of?
Did you identify those?
Yes, there was a list.
So, you gave them a list saying?
I want to say 23. There were 23 options. We even named areas we didn't even think existed, like we just put South, we put South Saberton, West Saberton, East Saberton. We tried to give as many options for people to choose from.
Very good. And when you say, are you a member of a neighborhood association, did you have, do you have that broken down as to whether that was in Greenmont, First Ward?
So, I can do that, yes. I can do that analysis. I did not do that for this because I wanted to leave it high level, but if you are interested in diving more into that information, I'm happy to help with that.
Well, it'd be interesting to know how much work we have to do within our neighborhoods.
I can follow up and give you kind of a result by neighborhood.
And then lastly, how do you find this useful?
I think it's useful from the standpoint of seeing kind of the engagement level that we would have with a participation in our GIs from the public. 225 has kind of been a higher end number from past experiences like with Christine, our election survey, the last two cycles has been around Christine, I want to say 200 to 300. And the insights from that can help us determine, to decide like from the election standpoint, what can we do better or what can we change to make this easier? Thankfully, those have been overwhelmingly positive so that we haven't had to change much. But from this standpoint, what I'm hoping to be able to do is create a more quasi-boundary of neighborhoods that aren't the black lines you saw. The black lines are the historic boundaries. I'm going to leave those alone, but make a more fluid version of the map that we could possibly alter over time as the survey responses possibly change and that we can start coming up with a more verified sort of crowdsourced map of our neighborhoods.
So, the black lines that we see here are what you determined to be neighborhood districts or?
They are one of two options. They either are in their charter for the neighborhood association or they are from the historic data, either from the historic districts or past, I want to say Census Bureau mapping. It's one of those three options normally. And we knew that they were not accurate reflecting today's neighborhoods.
Well, from past experience, I think that you probably get more of it from an historic neighborhood designation, and that's been done through the application for that particular district.
And this isn't meant to replace that. Those will always stay in our mapping system as is. This is to help fill in those gaps that we don't have drawn in there.
Okay. No, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
My main question was, how do you find this useful?
Yeah. I think there's going to be quite a few uses, and as we do more over year over year, I think that's going to help not just the Ward and Boundary Commission, but it may help city council in terms of decision making or possibly resources. I don't want to speculate on it, but I think there's a lot of options for that. And participatory GIs can be very useful. It can be accursed too if not done properly, and so it'd be my intent to do it properly.
We keep finding more uses for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, a couple of years ago, year, two years, I don't know, you printed out large maps and sent them to each of the neighborhood associations and said, here's what the city believes to be Woodburn. And you asked the neighborhood associations to kind of say, what do you consider your neighborhood to be? What was ever done with that?
So, we got two maps back from that, from that effort. And this is a big catalyst behind doing the survey was because as, as I think things have changed, that was also during late COVID, and I don't think a lot of people wanted to come out to the office to grab a piece of paper other people handled. So, that is still an option, an opportunity for neighborhood associations if they, I don't know the legal apparatus to do that, that's probably a Ryan question, but if they had or wanted to change their boundary, what the mechanism would be for that. But from the standpoint of confirming the lines that you saw in there, those are the exact same as those maps that were printed out.
Okay. Did Evansdale Neighborhood Association, were there any responses back from there?
There were a couple. I want to say at least four.
I peeked at your QR code and I didn't see it, so I'm glad to hear that.
It's probably swish.
Because they're pretty tight, they're a pretty tight group, so I was hoping that a few of them had, had put something in.
Yeah, if the map was cooperating on this screen with this mouse being where it is, I could probably show you, but there were some Evansdale responses. I can confirm that. I think majority were, like everything north of Van Boris and Patterson was considered Suncrest, which historically that pretty much told us what we already knew. Evansdale was effectively where we assumed Evansdale to be.
Yeah, Evansdale's pretty bound.
I think the really only difference would have been, I think there might have been some responses north of University Avenue, and I think we only had Evansdale defined from south of University Avenue, if I remember correctly.
Right, because they don't know what to say on the other side.
Right. And that gets to the whole.
And they get included, they get included in Evansdale Neighborhood Association if they show up.
Right. And this is not to.
Yeah. And they make suggestions for areas on the other side of, that neighborhood makes suggestions for areas on the other side, so.
Like I said, in neighborhoods, considering them to be parts of neighborhoods, I would like to get that mapped.
Yeah.
That would absolutely be awesome, and I could work with you all to do that.
Maybe we should, maybe we should try again.
I'm happy to.
When you're, you know, when you're at a stage when you want a new project.
Well, we, we have a plotter that can print, we can, we are happy to print anytime that that would be needed. Just let us know.
Thank you so much for sending us the results of us today. I appreciate it.
Hope to show you all again in a year. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. And we're on to the public hearing. The first, I'm sorry. Okay. First thing we have is an ordinance closing the police pension plan to new entrants, electing option two financing method, and authorizing enrollment of new hires in the municipal police officers and firefighters retirement system. If anyone is wishing to speak on this particular matter, then they do so now. Next we have on the public hearing, an ordinance closing the fire pension plan to new entrants, electing option two financing method, and authorizing enrollment of new hires in the municipal police officers and firefighters retirement system. I will open this to the public to speak on, if anyone wishes to speak on this matter now. And closing. And last, we have an ordinance amending Article 747, establishing fire protection service charges if anybody wishes to speak on this matter. I open that now. All right. First we have unfinished business. This is the consideration of approval of the second reading of an ordinance closing the police pension plan to new entrants, electing option two financing method, and authorizing enrollment of new hires in the municipal police officers and firefighters retirement system before, our first reading was 1217, 2024. Before we take our vote, John, Mr. Ferguson, would you like to come and give us a quick background?
Very quick. Thank you. John Ferguson, Finance Director, was just here to present the second reading of the proposed ordinance to close the city's legacy police pension plan to new entrants and also to elect the state's optional two financing. The two priorities are the two primary reasons for doing this. Number one is securing the participant plan's benefits. We respect our firefighter, excuse me, our police officers and our retirees enough to fund their plan. And number two is to minimize the financial impact to the city, which again, just to put in different words, we respect our taxpayers and our residents enough to make sure that we are going to fund this in a way that's not going to put a financial strain on the city. Like I said, that's the easiest way to say it. Overall, we hired a, or the city engaged a licensed professional actuary, Bolton Retirement. They have done several studies for us, actually more than several studies for us. They have met with both pension boards, they have met with city council, they have met with city leadership, and they have presented in the end what we are referring to as the compromise plan. Compromise plan basically is a plan so that we can effectively meet both of our priorities. Number one is stabilizing the, the plan, which is currently for the police 21.3% funded or 65.7 million unfunded as of their valuation date of July 1, 2023. That was their last valuation date. So, we're going to make sure that we have a plan to get them fully funded, and we are also doing it in a way that is going to have the least minimum financial impact to the city overall. I do want to note that this plan is going to have no impact to the current participants and retirees. It's a very, very important note to make that they're not going to experience anything different, they're still going to get the exact same benefit that they have been promised, they're going to get the exact same benefit that they have earned, which is extremely important especially for me. Any questions? Thank you.
I move to approve.
Second.
No discussion?
Bill Kowecki?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Boganum?
Yes. Passes 6-0. Next we have the consideration of approval of the second reading of an ordinance closing the fire pension plan and new entrants, selecting option two financing method, and authorizing enrollment of new hires in the municipal police officers and firefighters retirement system. Welcome back.
Thank you, sir. Move to approve.
Fire pension, same things, please. Yeah, we have the exact same key responsibilities, same key priorities. Bolton Retirement, they presented us with the, with the compromise plan. That's our plan moving forward. One thing I did want to note many years ago is that if there are no issues and this bill or this, this ordinance does pass, it is my anticipation to actually make those transfers from the, the city's unfunded pension, fire and police pension money market account into their respective investment accounts as soon as possible with the permission of our interim city manager. Got to make sure he approves it first, but as soon as we do have that ability and permission, 100%, I'm going to do this as soon as I can. That way, we are demonstrating good faith not only to our pensioners, but also to the public as well. We're doing what we said we were going to do. So, I just wanted to add that in there as well. Thank you.
Now, now I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, then if we do those actions, that is all right with the state as far as our future ability to put in funds toward the new plan? If we are putting all of those funds into the old plan, we are somehow getting credited for that?
Yes, ma'am. So, what's going to end up happening is that in order for the compromise plan to work, we need to make the one-time contribution, the 50% of it going into fire, 50% of it going into the police pension fund, make that at one time, on or before June 30, 2025, so that we do, the city does get credit of that amortization of that one-time contribution that goes against our future employer required minimum payments. So, yes.
And so, as we get new payments, we get new funds in, like for instance, through the sales tax, the portion of the sales tax that is, then where will those funds go?
They will also be deposited directly into the pensions respective accounts.
So, how do we put money into the new accounts when we have new hires?
That is going to be a bill that we receive from the state. So, I haven't seen the actual logistics of it yet, but I'm anticipating that we're actually going to receive either an invoice or a notice that we're going to have to pay either on a monthly or an annual basis. I believe it's going to be monthly, but when that comes due, we will pay that.
Good. Just wanted to be sure we're getting funds into both accounts.
Oh, yes. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? I know we've been discussing this for over a month.
Bill Kowecki?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Boganum?
Yes, passes 6-0. And we have a consideration of approval of a second reading of an ordinance amending Article 747, establishing fire protection service charges. Mr. Ferguson, come on down.
Thank you. So, I'd like to present the second reading of the ordinance of the increase in the city's fire protection service charges by a one-time 15% increase. The objective of this increase is to help transition the fire pension over to the state's optional two funding method and also as a secondary objective to address rising operational costs. Now, for the funding of the fire pension transition, again, this will help support that transition and also help stabilize the city's pension plan. The secondary, because we are anticipating, it's not guaranteed, we are anticipating having surplus funds after that, that will help address any general increases on operating expenses in the fire department specifically due to inflation and also the anticipated changes in the department's holiday pay and/or premium pay, which have not yet been solidified.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. No discussion?
Bill Kowecki?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Boganum?
Yes, passes 6-0. Wards and commissions?
I move to reappoint Brennan Williams as the Fifth Ward Representative on the Planning Commission.
I'll second that.
By acclamation?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Is that all? Okay. And now we are on our public portion, which shall be subject to the rules established by council and appointed by resolution. Emily is not here, which did she have her board?
Not myself last night.
All right. Thank you very much. Do you, do you have the, who's in charge? You got it? All right.
The timer?
The timer, yes. I know that is helpful. Thank you for that. All right. So, this is the public portion of the rules. Four minutes to speak. Please state your name and address. And I now open this portion. First name we have on the list is Lindsay Jacobs.
Kristi? Okay. Thank you. Hi, Lindsay Jacobs, Fifth Ward. Thank you, Mayor. I have three things. So, one is a little bit of a fact check, the second is a request, and the third is, we can call it a commendation or maybe a celebration if you like. The first is that I read a bit in the, I'm going to do news in quotations because not a lot of journalism going on in Morgantown, but that county, a county commissioner was spreading. spreading what I'm going to call misinformation about what qualifies someone in Morgantown as a resident or a non-resident as it relates to the warming shelter, the shelter up at Scott Avenue. And so when someone goes up to use the shelter, there's a questionnaire that they fill out, or someone sits down to fill out with them, and they ask them what their last residence was. And so I'm just going to use myself as an example. So I live in Morgantown, but if I were going up there in a similar situation, my last residence would be Greenville, South Carolina, because that's where I lived before I moved to Morgantown. But I have lived in Morgantown since 2022. And so Commissioner Bloom is the person who's out there saying that everyone up there essentially is a non-resident, they're not from Morgantown. But the reality is that a lot of these folks, and a lot of them are my friends, so I know, they may have, their last, you know, permanent address may have been Parkersburg, or Fairmont, or Clarksburg, or whatever, but they've been in Morgantown forever. I mean, a lot of the folks I know have literally been in Morgantown for like five years, but the last place they lived in a house or had a mailing address is somewhere else. And so the data, if you want to call it that, that we're collecting is really misleading because the question itself is not a good question for collecting whatever it is that the commissioner is after collecting. And so when you see information about where folks are from, it's bad data, and so we can't rely upon it at all. You know, I don't know why we need that data, they're here, so where they're from is really largely irrelevant. If they're not at the shelter, they're going to be on the street, and then folks are going to complain about that. If they're not on the street, you know, what do you do? You throw them in jail, we're going to pay for it either way. I ultimately assume that Commissioner Bloom is building some sort of case for pooling funding, or being, you know, trying to debunk the fact that we say there aren't enough beds or spaces for us to get folks into shelter. I can tell you that I've tried to get folks into shelter at least maybe three times in the last 30 days and couldn't because the permanent shelter is full. Sometimes, you know, we've been able to get them into the warming shelter, but that's not a long-term solution, and for a variety of reasons, sometimes that's not what folks need. So anyway, I wanted to debunk that because I feel like that's something that you are going to end up talking about. A lot of times, folks are speaking, Commissioner Bloom's words are coming through some members of this body sometimes, so. Second thing, we need 24/7, 365 bathrooms outside in Morgantown. That is like a totally doable thing that communities everywhere do. My shop downtown currently has a public restroom. It's fine, I'm going to keep doing it because I can, because I'm a business and I can do what I want, but it'd be really great if you guys would step up and do that, because people need places to use the bathroom. I've had two people throw up in my bathroom, not homeless people, people who got drunk and came into my, one was, what's it, hops on the lawn or whatever. So people didn't have a public bathroom to use, so they came in and my people had to clean it up. I have 20 seconds. So the last thing I'll say is you can really feel the tide changing on how people feel about poor people and homeless people in Morgantown, it's really exciting to see. Just yesterday, people donated about $750 so that we could open my shop as a warming, we're not open on Mondays, we could open our shop as a warming center for people to be during the day while the shelter wasn't open. We can probably open five more days now on Sundays and Mondays, which is really neat. I have four 20-somethings that work for me, and they're more compassionate than a lot of people in this body. They've never worked with homeless people or people with mental illness, poor people before, and yet they're displaying leadership that I'd love to see a lot of you all display. So that's what I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Annie Crown in York.
I was looking over the packet for tonight's meeting. I learned far more about asbestos abatement than I ever needed to know, but what I was looking for was an addendum that is supposed to go with all city contracts, at least this is what Emily told me, wherein the person signing the contract agrees to abide by the city's protected classes, so gender, identity, and sexual orientation, and veteran status, which are not protected by federal or state law. And so when people sign the contract, they're signing an EEOC statement saying they will not discriminate based on race or sex, which of course means gender, and a few other things, but it does not include, the ones the city of Morgantown includes. And we do have an addendum document that is supposed to be included with all the contracts that, as far as I can tell, is not being included. So if you go through the asbestos abatement contracts that are in there for the proceedings packet, it's got the EEOC, but not the one for the city of Morgantown. So I would like to see that put in our contracts, please. Also, in going through things, I found so many inconsistencies between the code and ordinances and the charters that I think it'd be really great, in the spirit of Danielle's efforts to clean up the charter. The charter has got four to five protected classes for City Morgantown. It does race, sex, and political or religious opinions or affiliations. End of story. When you get to the Human Rights Code, 153.031, probably A, it talks about employment, discrimination in the city by employers doing business here. They've got 12 protections under that category, but it also has no enforcement clause or no penalty that's mentioned for violating it. And I guess one could say that that gets passed along to the Human Rights Commission to investigate, but we only get to address the three things that we cover, veteran status, gender identity, and sexual orientation, that aren't protected by state law. Otherwise, we have to refer everybody out to the State Human Rights Commission, which is okay because that's what's working for me, but not having any sort of penalty or enforcement clause makes it have the same force as, let's say, a resolution. We think it's a bad idea to discriminate. Amen. Then we get to the anti-bullying statute, which is the most recent of the ones I will address, which is at 113.01B1, and it lists 20 protected classes. It's quite thorough. Of course, that ordinance only applies to people 21 and younger, and by the body of the anti-bullying ordinance, it is meant to address city programs, so city boat park is specifically mentioned, the library is specifically mentioned, and programs run by the city. I'm not sure what those would be because I haven't really seen any. But then further down, it mentions, by far down, grantees of the city. So it seems to me that would include any organization that gets, puts in a budget request, they're due December 31st, right? But any non-city organization that puts in and gets money from the city council or the administration or finance department should also be bound by the anti-bullying statute, but that is entirely unclear in the ordinance itself. So I would like very much if we could tighten that up. We are not alone with this problem. HUD, EEOC, and pretty much every other federal and state law is inconsistent. It's protected classes. EEOC's got a list, HUD has an entirely different list. Everyone seems to agree on race and gender and religion, but otherwise, it's all over the place, and it'd be great if we could make ours more pretty than everyone else's. Yes, I'll do a written form, Jenny.
And the last name on the list we have is Stephanie Hunt.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Hunt, 220 Front Street. I'm co-chair of the Greenmount Neighborhood Association, and I'm here on behalf of us about a lighting issue. Currently, on Green Street, our beautiful iconic lollipop lights that we love so much are out. The street is completely dark now, and we're here to advocate for our city council member, Dave, to advocate for us during the budgetary meetings, for us to get new lighting there, and we were really hoping we could get lighting that will continue to show the character of the neighborhood, something somewhat unique, not just like every other light, if possible to keep that character of our neighborhood. And Green Street specifically got those special lights because it is our most heavily trafficked pedestrian spot in our neighborhood. So it's very frustrating that it's dark now, and we were also hoping, if it was possible, to get any temporary lighting until the budgetary meetings are adjourned, if that's a possibility. Thank you all for your time, and thank you so much.
There's anybody else wishing to speak right now? Just ask, state your name and address. This closes our public portion. No special committee reports this evening, no consent agenda items this evening, and now we are on to our new business. The first thing we have is the consideration of approval and the first reading of an ordinance authorizing an airline agreement and lease with SkyWest Airlines.
This is standard agreement with our new carrier. It covers, it's a four-year lease with the option of renewal over two-year periods. It covers both the terminal building, the runway area and common areas with that. Pretty basic, and we recommend approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any questions?
All right. Pretty straightforward.
Well, I mean, technically, this is Damian's first opportunity to speak on any questions we have, so I just.
You don't have to.
You want us to come up with some?
We'll drill him a little bit later.
We only get one, we only get that, do this for the first time once. All right. You get a pass.
I got a couple more down here.
Bill Kuecky?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Bugganam?
Yes. Passes six zero. Next, we have the consideration of approval of the first reading of an ordinance confirming the sale of property in the Fourth Ward District to Jones Place LLC and authorizing execution of deed.
I'm going to let Ryan tape this one.
Yeah.
Thank you, Damian. Thank you, mayor. That's, since you got no comments on your first presentation, it's perfection. This ordinance is a confirmation of a prior transaction authorized by city council in 2014. The city auctioned property, sold to a buyer, conveyed the deed. The seller, or the purchaser, rather, recently discovered that the deed had not been recorded, and they cannot locate the original. We, the city, have located the ordinance authorizing the transaction and a receipt that confirms that the city received the funds for the sale. And so this ordinance is presented to council to create a record that it's confirmed that the city manager can execute a new deed to confirm that prior transfer and clean up the title to this property. So ask the council, please, pass this through on first reading and adopt the ordinance so that we can confirm that prior sale.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. The only question I have is a matter of curiosity. First of all, I appreciate the fact that we're cleaning up and making this available, but what precipitated this activity?
This was part of the Jones Place development for the fourth phase, I think it was. Greg Matheny reached out to the city, inquiring about the property that we had. I think we acquired the property back in the 60s through a tax sale, and so it was a piece of property that helped complete his thing, his grouping of those properties. So we put it up for a public auction, he was the only bidder on that property back in the day.
Again, is there some ongoing activity that we might be made aware of?
I was contacted by the purchaser's attorney within the past month or so, who related that purchaser had just noticed that the deed had not been recorded. His prior attorney, who worked on that transaction, is deceased. He has another attorney who is looking through those records. It may have been part of that effort. I asked about development plans, and there are some, but nothing imminent. There was no particular urgency, but this is just something we need to do to make sure the records accurately reflect reality.
The activity's appropriate, I was just curious. Thank you.
Sure.
Bill Kuecky?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Bugganam?
Yes. Passes six zero. Next, we have consideration of approval of a bid call, 2025-11, for asbestos abatement and demolition of asbestos abatement and demolition of 59 Donnelly Street and 64, how do you say that street? White, Quig?
Hoag.
Hoag.
Say hoag.
Street and restoration of land.
This is two properties in the Wharf District area that are currently condemned. The city is planning on using our grant funds that we got through DEP, our DLAB funds, to demo these two properties. Was it Beaver, or, I forget if it's the?
Badger.
Badger, that's right. Badger was the low bid on that contract. We have not done any work with them in the past, but references check out, so we recommend awarding the contract to them.
Move to approve.
Second, just to get the question, do we own those properties?
No, we don't.
We're going to demolish them, though.
Yes.
That was my.
On what basis?
Pardon?
Go ahead.
No, on what basis?
The properties have been condemned, they've been vacant for many years, and so the city is stepping in to raise these two properties.
I remember them as an obstacle to development in that area, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
Way back when?
Way back when, probably.
But they, we're going to knock down the buildings, but they're still going to be an obstacle to development because we don't own the property?
Well, they'll be leaned, and then.
So when we knock them down, we'll put a lien on it, which one may take away the obstacle? Or we'll sell the property because?
Maybe.
Wouldn't look forward to that, judging from past experience. So in other words, I'm saying, don't make that assumption.
Just as to mechanics, the building official has issued a demolition order under the Building Code, which directs the owners of the buildings to demolish the buildings because they're structurally unsound, and the owner hasn't complied with that order, and that's what allows the city pursuant to the Building Code to enter and demolish. The Building Code also does authorize the city to place a lien for costs incurred. Obviously, no guarantee as to any future use of the property. This is purely an issue with correcting the deficiencies in those structures.
One more step.
Just for my, sorry.
No, go on.
My clarification, say, we asked them to demolish these buildings. They have not complied. We're going to demolish them and charge them for the demolition. Okay.
Bill Kuecky?
We have to do what we have to do.
Sorry. Bill Kuecky?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Bugganam?
Yes. Passes six zero. Also, I just want to point out that asbestos abatement and demolition of asbestos repeats, and that wasn't me rereading the line. I had to double-check what I had read out loud, so. Next, we have the presentation of an annual report on police pension fund. As far as, we haven't seen you in a while.
Not even half done. Not even half.
Wow. So what I'd like to do now is to present the police pension fund investments. This is the annual report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. The objective is to provide a comprehensive overview to the city council regarding the fund's financial condition and performance for that fiscal year, and also, more importantly, to satisfy our MPOB, which is the Municipal Pension Oversight Board, compliance requirements to present to city council. to present to city council so that I may certify that annual report, which is the last step for them to get their state aid, which is the, the state insurance fee, surcharge. So this is the last step, then they will get their money. So just as financial highlights, and remember, we're talking about the police now. The total pension fair market value as of June 30th, 2024 was 18 million, 18.4 million. I'm just gonna use approximates for the moment, which was an increase of approximately $1.4 million over last year. That does not mean that that was 100% investment growth or income. We'll get to how the money got in there and then also where the money went. The total contributions, so the inflows into that events, investment plan were $444,000 from employee contributions. Now, that is from the 9.5% of the employees' gross wages. So they contribute 9.5%. That is 444,000. The city had its required minimum contribution of $1.4 million. That was based off the 107% over the prior year contribution or the alternate funding plan. And then finally, we have the West Virginia surcharge tax. This is for the last fiscal year that was received, which was $737,000. The investment earnings, the total gross investment earnings between dividends and investment income, capital gains and realized gains were one, approximately $1.6 million. That is before the investment advisor fees and expenses of almost $63,000. Therefore, we have a net investment income of $1,515,616. The total benefit payments are in two categories. We have the total retirement, disability, and survivor benefits paid. This is the total gross payment for the year of approximately 2.7 million. And then we have return of contributions of approximately $45,000. Total administrative expenses for the year were an allocation of the city's audit fees, which were 2.3 or $2,280. They had $51 in office supplies. And then finally, they had an outsourced pension processing fee. They, the police pension fund has engaged a local CPA firm to actually process their monthly pensions and also for their required IRS and West Virginia tax filings. And that cost, this is not the payments, but the cost to that was almost $14,000 for the year. Overall, the total return on investments were 9.0% for the period July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024. And in conclusion, we are committed to maintaining the financial integrity of the fund, ensuring the continued provisions of our benefits to our dedicated police officers and their families. And we hereby present this for certification, enabling the city to proceed with its request for its share of the West Virginia surcharge tax for the upcoming fiscal year. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have to officially accept the report or anything like that?
I'll look to the attorney.
No action is required, other than the presentation of the report to the council.
Okay. All right. And next, we have the presentation of an annual report on the fire pension. Is Mr. Ferguson here? Oh, there you are.
Shock and surprise.
How detailed do you want the report?
I'm sorry?
How detailed do you want the report?
I think, I think what you did.
I think the 62nd version.
62nd version. All right. Total fair market value as of June 30th, 2024 for the fire pension fund was $15.5 million, which was an increase of almost $1.2 million from the previous year. The total contributions consist of $393,000 from the employee contributions. The city contributed its required contributions of $1.1 million. We also had an additional city employer contribution of $150,000, which we can talk if you want to. And then they also had the WV, the West Virginia surcharge tax received for last fiscal year of $690,000. Total gross investment income is $1.3 million. Total investment advisor fees and expenses were $63,000. The total net investment income was approximately $1.26 million for the year. Total benefit payouts were $2.3 million. Total return of contributions were $77,000. Total administration expenses were the allocation for the city's audit cost. And then also, they had $703 for their secretary fee and supplies. Overall, return on investments were slightly under what the police had, which was, they had 9.0. The fire had 8.82% return. How's that for 60 seconds?
You don't even have to leave.
The bottom line is that we're in good shape.
Yes. The investments did fairly well last year. This is not a guarantee that they will continue to do that, but they did do fairly well. They do have their own boundaries on what they have, that they're allowed to invest in. There's a whole range saying how much they can invest in equity, how much they can invest in fixed, or fixed income and cash equivalents, how much in any particular individual industry or sector. There's a lot of rules on how they invest into. That way, for example, if someone's gonna compare that to the S and P 500, so during the same period, the S and P 500 may have returned approximately 23%, whereas they returned 9%. That's because they couldn't invest 100% into the S and P 500. West Virginia gives them the boundaries, they have to follow that. So they're diversified as much as they can, and they're allowed to rebalance. So they're allowed to get away from that particular boundary throughout the year, but then they must rebalance at least once per year.
Regardless, and I appreciate the fact, your explanation, and I realize the limitations, but we are in fact reading our commitments.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
And what was the source or the cause for the additional?
$150,000. Thank you for asking. So if you take a look, and I included that with your packet, unfortunately, the finance office at the time, they deposited $150,000 into the fire pension checking account in order to make sure that they can meet that month's pension payments. The checking account was short. They had to make sure that when they did do the monthly pension disbursements, that it wasn't gonna bounce. So the finance department temporarily deposited $150,000. They later found out that they could not take it back. Any contributions into that is considered a, a permanent contribution. So their, I shouldn't say their, our, our departments, I guess you would call it their, well, they shouldn't have done it, but they wanted to make sure that nobody's pension check bounced. So I, after we reported this to the MPOB, I did have to get permission, written permission from the executive director, the guy's name is Blair Taylor, to request that additional $150,000, which was contributed last year, which we couldn't take back, be counted towards our required minimum contribution for this year. So the city's not out any money, it's just the timing, and we learned the hard way not to do it again. How's that?
Better than bouncing checks, though.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other? All right. And now, I just want to hang tight, because?
Yes, sir.
I assume you're gonna be discussing Part F. The consideration of approval of a resolution designating funds from fiscal stabilization fund to life and health fund. Do you want to summarize that for us?
Yes, yes. Yes, I'll summarize it. So this is a request to transfer funds from the fiscal or the financial stabilization fund to the life and health fund in order to stabilize and replenish the city's self-funded health insurance plan cash reserve. Now, just as some background, the city has a self-funded health insurance plan where the city assumes the financial risk of providing our employees' healthcare benefits. So we don't have commercial insurance or traditional current, commercial insurance. We act as our own insurance company, if that makes sense. By doing that, it gives us the flexibility to tailor our health insurance benefits to meet or exceed our employees' needs. Basically, we want to offer or continue to offer certain benefits that we may not be able to obtain through commercial insurance. Nobody likes change. We want to continue with what we have. Therefore, we are self-insured in order to do that. This type of plan has the potential to have cost savings, okay? Because we are a very small risk pool, risk pool meaning that we have a limited number of people that are participating in our plan. Right now, we have basically the city of Morgantown, the Boe Park, and the Morgantown Parking Authority. We're the only three employers, really, it's the city of Morgantown. We are contributing into this self-funded plan, and then our employees are the only participants in those plans. Our employees and their beneficiaries, those that are also on their plan. Now, that also comes with the potential, the risk of, yes, we can have higher than abnormal claims, and we can run out of money, which is where we are right now. Okay? So it does have its upsides, it does have its downsides, and we are currently looking at a downside. So that's the background. When it comes to claims, claims are cyclical, cyclical, which means that we can have variations, which means we will have experience, and we have historically experienced highs and lows. So we'll go through during certain times of the year where we will see high claims, and then it'll calm down, and then we'll experience low portions where we have low claims for that month. Now, that either comes from seasonal variances, employee behavior. Employee behavior is kind of key when it comes to, when we talk about our major swings, where employees have delayed elective procedures until they have met their deductibles for the year, or they have reached either retire, retirement age and are, well, basically leads to spikes in their total claims. They've earned the benefit, they had delayed these procedures until they are coming to retirement age, and now they are, basically, they're, they're using the benefit which they have earned. Unfortunately, because of the timing of when that happened, that does help, or that does affect the, the big swings that we have, which is one of the reasons why we are having this discussion. And then finally, we also have catastrophic claims. Catastrophic claims, also high-cost claims for major surgeries or chronic conditions. We, you know, as an employer, we can't predict when we are going to experience those and when we're not. We can't tell when someone's spouse is going to get cancer. We can't tell when someone's dependent is gonna break a leg or needs major surgery or whatever instance we can think of. We just simply can't predict those catastrophic claims, but yet we are, we absorb that risk because we are self-funded. Okay? Now, we do have what's called a self, or excuse me, a stop-loss insurance policy. Now, this can become very complicated very fast, but the 50-foot, or the 50,000-foot view is that it covers basically the first $100,000 in aggregate per year per covered individual. Now, that doesn't mean per employee, okay? Because each employee might have a family plan with a dozen kids behind them, and we are insuring not only our employee, but their spouse and their dozen kids. We take that risk on. So if one of those covered employees has a catastrophic claim, our stop-loss insurance will cover up to $100,000 of that, which means that, or will cover after that $100,000. So we would incur the first $100,000. We pay them. After that $100,000, that's when our stop-loss kicks in, and then they, we still pay it, but they end up reimbursing us, and there's a lag period on how long it takes for them to reimburse us. Okay? So it's, it's not automatic. It, we're experiencing that. It's about between 30 and 60 days. We do get a reimbursement, but we do have that policy. There are two caveat, or two extraordinary items to that stop-loss insurance. Number one is what they call a laser carve-out. That's the, the AKA, also known as, we can go into detail on this later, but the, what a laser carve-out means is that our insurance, our stop-loss insurance carrier has specifically identified individuals that they will not insure for up to that $100,000 threshold, either due to an extreme chronic illness or because they had an extremely high spend last year. They're just not willing to insure that individual. So they carve them out specifically and say, we are either not going to cover them, or we are gonna cover them, but yet it's gonna be after a much higher threshold. So instead of the $100,000, it could be $300,000, it could be $500,000. That is totally 100% up to the insurance carrier. Okay? And that does affect how much our insurance premiums are. So that's the first one. The second one is that we also have, I'm gonna make sure I'm reading it right. Let me go back to, it is called, I don't have it in there. I do have it in the other one. But there is an aggregate amount of a threshold which we are willing to absorb, which is another additional $200,000 as a plan in whole for everybody, it's not just by individual person. So once an individual reaches that $100,000 threshold, the city is willing to absorb an additional $250,000 of that total cost for all, everybody who has met that $100,000. So we're covering, we're absorbing the next $250,000 in order to reduce our overall monthly premiums for the stop-loss insurance, insurance. And what that does is actually, we get a credit back on our insurance premium for how much we pay over and beyond that $100,000 up to $250,000. So we do get a small benefit back from that. It does help lower our insurance cost, and it also helps keep our insurance costs so that they don't skyrocket from year to year. We have a nice, more level increase in premium for that. Does that make sense? Okay. So currently where we're at, because we have an extended high volume of claims over the past six months, we have depleted the city's cash reserves. We've actually borrowed approximately $1.4, $1.45 million from the general fund temporarily to get us past this. We are hoping to repay this very shortly. We haven't gotten to that point yet, and that was just to meet the needs of our actual cash disbursements for claims, which happen weekly. So there is a weekly ACH for actual claims. There is a bi-weekly ACH for our prescription claims. There's also a monthly ACH for our administrative fee. There's basically four to five different bills that we have to deal with on a monthly basis. Some are weekly, some are bi-weekly, some are monthly. Still, they still continue to come, even though our contribution into the plan doesn't meet the cash outflows. So that's where we are. We don't currently have enough in there at the moment to meet the cash disbursements. Therefore, we are borrowing from the general fund. We need to pay that back, and we also need to meet a minimum amount in our cash reserves to help cover what we call the incurred but yet not reported, IBNR. That's our potential liability. And what that means is that right now, we could have an employee or one of their dependents go to the hospital today, receive service today, which means in accounting terms, we have incurred that expense, the city has, but yet it could take anywheres between three to six months before we actually see, you know, to go through the whole process for the, for the hospital, to bill our insurance company, for our, well, third-party, third-party administrator, we are the insurance company, to build a third-party administrator, to go back to the hospital, to change whatever records, to go back, to add, to the time it would actually withdraw the cash from our account for that claim. So that incurred but yet not yet reported is an estimated liability of approximately three months' worth of claims. That three months' worth of claims is approximately, I had it in front of me, it's two point or 1.8, let me get there. $1.8 million total we need in order to meet that minimum three-month cash reserves and also to repay general fund for what it has already borrowed. We're talking $3.315 million in order to help financially stabilize our self-funded health insurance cash reserves. Does that make sense? Okay.
So when you say we borrowed temporarily from the general fund?
Yeah.
With the intention to reimburse?
Yes.
With what were we intending to reimburse that? Just premiums? Or where did you anticipate $1.4 million?
Well, it wasn't all at one time. It's $300,000, $400,000, $600,000. Well, it wasn't all at one time. It's 300, $400,000, $600,000 at first, but it was, we were anticipating coming off from our high-peak spend, so that we were replenishing that with our employee, our regular monthly employer contributions plus the employees' contributions, so that we were in a position where there was more money coming in than going out. We were anticipating that to be basically not upside down, and we could repay general fund. Uh, unfortunately, that continued high spend trend has not stopped, and we've experienced this high peak now for approximately six months. Historically, it should come down.
And what's the plan if it doesn't? Because we, like, we have a very nice fiscal stabilization fund currently that I feel like we've done some scrimping to pull together, and I'm sure everyone here is aware. People come to us all the time and say, "I need half a million dollars for X, Y, and Z. Just take it out of the fiscal stabilization fund," and I, I constant, I, it makes me very uncomfortable. I love that savings account. And this is an emergency, and this is why I'm so hesitant to utilize it any other time, but we're talking about more than half of our current fund for the next six months, maybe, we hope. What will the plan be moving forward?
Okay. So we have three parts to our plan. Now, the first part is that we are going to, I am going to, uh, reanalyze exactly how much the employer cost is per month per plan type. So if it's a single, how much is that going to be? If it is a family, how much is that going to be per employee, okay? That has not been changed by the city for over two years now, so it is due for an increase. Now, it was not changed for a two-year period because it had been, uh, the peaks and valleys were pretty level, pretty predictable, but now we are no longer there. So the first plan is to reevaluate how much the actual cities and Bow Park and the parking authorities employer cost is going to be each month moving forward. So that's step number one. And then we also need to build in a, an amount so that we can actually repay that. So it's not just going to be, you know, what is our actual cost per month? It's going to be what we refer to as cost plus, because now we got to pay back what we are now, if you want to call it borrowing, borrowing from the financial stabilization fund. That's number one. Number two, and this is at our mayor's request, is to actually put together a committee that meets on a monthly basis to review the performance of our self-insured health, uh, health, uh, self-insured employee health plan, uh, which he actually recommended, yourself, if you are willing, uh, to be part of, um, to be the representative for Bow Park.
I love watching budgets. It stresses me out, but I love, I don't like getting to a point where it's like, "Well, we're $3 million behind," when it's the first I've heard of it.
Yep. I'm not either, and that's, that's why we're here having the conversation. So he recommended yourself. Uh, he also recommended that we get, uh, is it, is it Charles?
Butcher.
Okay. Right, we would like to, if you would represent the, um, Morgantown Parking Authority, uh, and basically what the idea behind it is that we want to make sure that we have members of council and board members that are, uh, on those particular boards, uh, not just the city of Morgantown's, uh, city council, but you guys are obviously part of it, but, uh, just to get that representation, to make sure that we are being held accountable, and if we do need to make a change, because we would like to at least start repaying this within six months, fully intend to have it repaid in full within one year, if we are not there or making not as much progress as we would hope after six months, we give the timeline to be June 30th, 2025, then we start exploring other options. Now, that other option would be to explore commercial insurance.
So that's step number three?
That's step number three. Step number three is if we, after six months, we are still not able to, um, to fully stabilize and also to start repaying, and to repay within, uh, that 12-month period, yes, we are going to start exploring commercial insurance.
Any other potential alternatives, I guess, would be?
Potential alternatives? Well, that's also when we're going to meet on a monthly basis as that new committee. Uh, I've also invited our, our, um, actually, he is called our health benefits consultant, Paul White, uh, with Assured Partners, um, to meet with us. Um, he didn't seem to have a problem with that. Um, and when we meet, we're currently meeting with him now quarterly, myself, our director of human resources, uh, our benefits manager. Um, we have been meeting on a quarterly basis just to review, uh, every quarter that we have met. He has brought here some different ideas to help, uh, basically cost savings. Some of them are great. We have implemented those. Some of them are, we, um, we believe at the time it would have discouraged our employees from receiving the health care that they should, for whatever reason, basically putting up boundaries, or hoops to jump through, additional hoops. We didn't want to make it too difficult for our employees to receive the care that they need, but yet we also want to, uh, control our costs. If we do need to make a, I guess you would say, an undesirable decision, uh, such as putting up an additional barrier that may hinder, uh, certain individuals, certain employees from receiving that care, we want to make sure the city council, our board members, everybody's involved in that, uh, just so that, yeah, we have, um, complete representation. Everyone's in the loop. Does that make sense?
I think the big thing is to reemphasize the goal here is to provide the health care to our, for our employees that not only do they sign up for, that they deserve for.
Absolutely. Absolutely. That's part of their compensation package. So not only do we talk about what's, uh, what's one of our employees' gross wages, uh, if you compare just gross wages alone, the city, uh, is not really up to what we call market, uh, but yet, once you consider our health insurance that we provide as a benefit, and also our retirement, because we have a defined benefit plan, then we are at market. So we compete that way. So this is very important to our employees, making sure that, yes, when they go to the doctors, we're gonna, it's going to be paid for.
Which is one of the most stressful things in America, right?
Yes. We're not the only ones that are dealing with this issue either. City of Morgantown is, um, quite unique where, um, it's now come to this time where, you know, we are now talking about it instead of talking about it a year ago, so.
Any other?
Thank you for the good explanation.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Let me just quickly, um, this amount of money that you're requesting isn't out to bring us to some sort of equilibrium for the time being?
That's what we're planning on. Now, we cannot predict that this is going to continue to be a high spend trend. If this does continue to be a high spend every month, we are going to have to make some hard choices, but we are expecting this to come down, although we haven't seen that come down as much as we would like yet over the past six months. This is very unusual, and I have a, a graph, uh, that we can look at later, uh, that will show you a visual aid to help, where you can see our seasonal fluctuations, when we did incur, um, peaks for whatever reason, and then you can see over the past six months, we are historically, uh, very high. As a matter of fact, I might have it with me at the moment.
I guess, uh, my concern is, I honestly don't expect that, um, any windfall monies for the city.
Our intentions are to make sure that, uh, whatever is, um, transferred is going to be paid back. That, that is our intention, and if we can't...
No, I appreciate that you would try to do that, but, uh, on the other hand, um, just for future, I think we're going to have some...
Choices.
Hard decisions. Understood.
Library staff is insured through us as well, correct? I think last year during budget time, she was asking me, she didn't know how to prepare her budget because she didn't know what the increase in the health care cost was going to be. She asked me that at the same time that the Bow Park director asked me, so...
They may be. Um, I'm basically, if they do, I don't believe they have a, a lot of employees, um, so I don't think it's a significant portion of it, if they are. I can't tell you for certain if they are or not, off the top of my head. I just know that the big three, the number one, uh, about 90% of it is the city of Morgantown. Uh, actually, it's more than 90%.
I think the library has a lot of part-time staff, but I think their permanent full-time are...
Okay.
I think, if I'm recalling last year's budget season correctly.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sticky problem, complicated solutions.
Yes. Hopefully, hopefully we'll, we'll get past this. Thank you.
Looking for a motion.
Move to approve?
Second. Uh, just do a quick comment. Thank you for looking out for it. Yes.
Deputy Mayor Saleen?
Yes.
Danielle Trumble?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Bugan?
Yes, passes 6-0. All right, we are now on to our city manager's report. Uh, Damian, if you would give us your first report.
So the only thing I really have to report, uh, I sent out an email out earlier today with exciting news that we, uh, were recipients of the Raze Grant. Uh, we've got a, uh, $8 million, uh, for planning and design to look at the area of Dorsey Avenue from, uh, Kingland Pike all the way into the downtown. Uh, that project will look at, uh, improving it, uh, for pedestrians, cyclists. Uh, that corridor connects four different schools, three different parks, uh, five-plus different neighborhoods, uh, and so this project has a really, uh, the potential to have a really big impact on that area, and so it's really exciting to, to get that. Uh, we applied last year. Uh, we did get it last year, but we got urged to reapply, uh, and so we replied this year, and we, we got it. So, uh, as that, as the, uh, as we start moving through that process, uh, there'll be a lot of public involvement in that, and so it'll be, it'll be exciting. And that's all I got for that.
Great news.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, I ran into Ella earlier today. She was, you know, ecstatic about it also, but, uh, just for people out there in the community, it's a planning grant.
Planning grant, yes.
That does not mean construction.
This will be the first part, uh, and then once we get through that process, then we'll, we'll have a, a project, and then we'll turn around and go for more money to, to fund the construction.
Well, I guess that's the ability to identify the sources we might pursue.
Yes.
I agree. So that, I don't mean to dismiss it.
No, no, this is the first step in a, in a...
Everybody's expectations, you know, $8 million, isn't that wonderful? Well, maybe.
Yeah.
Um, while I have you, and I know that you've done this in the past, Green Street, we've addressed that numbers of times when it used to be in my ward, for example.
The lighting?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is there something that you could?
There is money in the budget currently, uh, for a project in it, and so, uh, in the next three, uh, three months, uh, as we go through budget process, uh, once we, we finalize things, uh, I'll be reaching out to the neighborhood association about those lights. And yes, we do want to, uh, I am part of that neighborhood, so I agree that we want to, uh, look at, you know, keeping the, uh, aesthetic of the uniqueness of that, that, that area, so.
Yeah. Um, and I remember that being controversial. Um, the wiring and all the rest of it, we can't just simply come in and...
I think the lights were put in the 70s and late, maybe early 80s, uh, and they are in bad shape. We do have, uh, replacement bulbs right now that we've ordered, and we just received, I think, last week. Uh, we have four globe heads that we'll be replacing here next week, and so...
You'll, you'll get your interim lighting.
Yes.
It's always a good strategically.
Those particular instruments, though, are, are not particularly, um, front, I, I, what's, what's the word for it, you know, when you're spilling light?
Uh, they're not downward-facing. They're not, they're, they're not dark sky compliant.
Right, dark sky. Thank you. I was looking for that term.
Uh, the new ones, I think that we got, uh, they may have a screen in them. They have the same look to it. They're, they're LED.
You're going to give them glow, but you're going to aim it down?
It's going to aim it down, yeah. It's going to, it's going to be a cutoff glow, I think, maybe.
Okay.
Uh, I had to look, uh, but we did just receive, we received the heads, uh, a couple weeks ago, a month ago, but we didn't receive the, uh, the actual light fixtures themselves, and we just received that last week, so.
Are we going to be able to do LED?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Uh, and then as, as the, as the, we have been fixing those lights because they don't make that fixture anymore, and so we've been, you know, kind of, uh, patchworking it together to keep them, uh, going, uh, until we can replace them. Uh, we have replaced a few of them out there with, with the LED internal fixture. The, you know, the globe looks the same, but the, it's the same globe. We just kind of changed the guts of it. Uh, and so the, the new ones that we put up, those four that we have, they'll look a little different. Uh, you'll notice the difference in them, but, uh, it's just, yeah, temporary until we can do the whole project.
So just to clarify, there is a temporary partial solution now, and you are working to get that money into next year's budget to do a more permanent?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So can we follow up on the Dorsey, um, project? So the good thing about it is that it's planning, like, not just conceptual planning, but it's planning and design, so, um, we would have a shovel-ready, um, design that would have costs attached to it and be ready to go with the next step.
To put that out there.
And this is the way that we get large projects accomplished. They're just, there's not room in our budget for these type of large projects that I've seen, and so this is a really important step for us. We've applied for other grants similar, like on the university corridor, and we have not...
I think this will be the largest grant we've received.
Yeah, so...
So it's exciting.
Huge, huge. So kudos to those of you who helped put it together and figured out how to wrangle some of that federal money to come to us, and especially in a corridor that has a lot of...
Serves a lot of vulnerable users.
A lot of, a lot of users and really no good way for people to, people who are off and on foot to not, to not be able to get through there well. It's been kind of bad form on everyone's part, so it's super great. The kids from South Middle were trying to get down there on bicycles a couple years ago, and we were on sidewalks that were above people's yards that were like four and five feet up.
There's a large deep ditch there, too.
Yeah, and, and kids on the sidewalk, because we should have probably properly been in the roadway, but the roadway would have been horrible, so we were on these weird sidewalks that were way above. Anyway, it, it is, um, a used corridor, and, um, this would be huge for that area, so just thank all of your staff and everyone who worked on it.
Thank you for your first report.
Thank you. It's good to be an exciting one, too. It's, uh, had something positive for it.
I'm glad it didn't start with bad news.
Yeah.
Uh, all right, our city clerk?
All right, thank you, Mayor. Um, so I want to say thank you for, uh, your appointment to the boards and commissions this evening. Uh, in 2024, you all appointed almost 50 volunteers to our boards and commissions, and that is huge. Um, on behalf of our city, I appreciate, uh, I want to say thank you for that, for that. Um, and for folks who may still be watching, we do have many vacancies still on our boards and commissions. Uh, an easy way of finding that list would be to go to our packet from tonight's meeting that is published on our website. Um, we have a list of all of the vacancies, vacancies for each board and commission. So anyway, thank you for your appointments throughout the year. Um, our fire civil service commission, um, they met this evening, and they appointed, um, Lieutenant Doug Sharp as our interim fire captain, um, with our most recent promotion, uh, for our fire chief, Gary Freshour. We, we have a, a spot left, uh, so we need to fill those spots. We, we have a, a spot left, so we need to fill those spots. And the Fire Civil Service Commission also, right now, they are holding their, their interviews. I've been talking about it for almost six months now, so the process to bring on a new firefighter, it's quite a long process, and they start with their agility exam, and they must pass it. Then they take the written exam, and they pass it. And now they're at the point where the commissioners interview them, and they, then they're, they're ranked. And, and after tonight, tonight's the first night of interviews with the commissioners. Tomorrow is the second and final night. They will be ranked, and then we'll have a list of candidates for our firefighters, and we'll be ready when we have vacancies. So I just, little follow-up on what we've been talking about for the last five months. So good luck to those candidates. And then lastly, as you know, our election season is here, and we started accepting the certificates of announcements. We should have started them yesterday, but due to the snow today, we did receive two today, certificates of announcements. So congratulations to those two folks who turned that in today. For anyone out there who may be interested in running for council, the seats that will be up for election are awards two, four, and six. And the time period to come in and get, get the certificates of announcement and turn them in is January sixth through February tenth. So that's it. Just wanted to fill you in on what's going on.
Thank you.
Nick, I'll lose my report.
City attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. In December, the city submitted its annual progress report to the Home Rule Board. This is a, a report on all the Home Rule Plan initiatives the city has been authorized to implement and has actually implemented, and an update on what it has done. Every participating city submits these each year, and they're publicly posted on the, the Home Rule Board's website so they can be reviewed by other cities, considering participation or other participant cities to, to see what initiatives cities are pursuing. The city had no new initiatives last year. It certainly has opportunities to do that, and management staff have discussed some opportunities. But if there is a scenario where you, as council members, feel there is some state law limitation on an initiative you would like to pursue, Home Rule is sometimes an option for that, and we can always discuss it at your convenience. And then those reports will be posted if you would like to review them or like to review other cities' plans and initiatives. City council in October adopted a resolution directing the study and recommendation of affordable housing options for the community. The requirement was for a report to be prepared within one hundred eighty days, so that'll be coming up in April, I believe. We've been providing some resources and options to the development services staff. And in support of that goal, we'll continue to do so and, and can also look at, look at any information that council has on that initiative. The state legislative session will begin tomorrow. Because there's a new governor incoming, the, the actual start of their work will be deferred until February twelfth, and then the session will run for sixty days through April twelfth. We had a, a good meeting with our legislators in December, and we'll keep in touch with them and monitor pending legislation, mostly through the efforts of the municipal league, who always keeps a good updated list. But as there are bills you hear about or would like information about, please let me know. I'll be happy to provide additional information or background. I think that's all I have to report today.
Thank you. All right, I'm thinking of a number between two and seven.
Want both me and Bill to pick one? Is that?
Oh, yours.
All right.
Because of the enthusiasm.
Okay, sweet. I appreciate our road crews for plowing the streets. It's very cold. I hope people are getting indoors. Thankful for our warming shelter and for the volunteers that are willing to man the warming shelter when it's after hours. And that'll conclude my report.
All right.
And I'd like to thank the acting city manager, too, for the road, road plowing and salt work. Appreciate the follow-ups to my question. And with the announcement from our city clerk about the election coming up, I've had a chance to talk to many of you, but I just want to formally say that I won't be seeking a third term. And it's been, been an honor to serve our community, and I will look for other ways to continue to do so in, after June thirtieth. Some of that will be the Mon River Trail Conservancy. And as we move into July with the new council, you know, I would be willing to continue to serve a MUB if the council so desires. But just want to put that out there, democracy works best when more people participate. So I just want people to know that there is a vacancy in the sixth ward.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for the last few terms.
Sure. No problem.
Stepped into a contentious seat there, and I've appreciated your representation, so.
I, I've enjoyed it. I've enjoyed it.
I have a few stat updates from Hazel's House of Hope that I was asked to share. Normally, tomorrow would be our H3 advisory council meeting, which is a representative of each of the tenant organizations, but that has been canceled or delayed. I'm not clear. But most of the stats I have are for the month of December, but the Salvation Army is usually a little slower in getting stats to us. They just released November stats. So in the month of November, their partnership with the city on the food box giveaways, they distributed thirty-five food boxes. They had five hundred and seventy-seven client visits to the day room, which resulted in eighty showers, a hundred and eight loads of laundry. They served three thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight meals in November, including about a hundred and twenty-five meals on Thanksgiving. I was actually at the Salvation Army on Christmas Day. I don't have their final numbers. When I was there, about forty minutes into their service, the number then was around sixty, so I assume that went up some. Hopefully, I will get some updated stats on December for the day room. The Warming Shelter, funded by city and county, was open December eleventh through December thirty-first, and in that time, they served thirty-four unique individuals and were able to move six of those to housing or other shelter. The Childcare Resource Center, through Catholic Charities, handled three hundred and sixty-eight different cases in December. Lauren's Wish had thirty-eight intakes that month with an average stay of six and a half days, which brings them to eight hundred and forty-one individuals served since they opened. So that's staggering numbers. And Wellspring, which is a mental health facility, served in December a hundred and forty-two active clients, and they currently have fifty-nine referrals on a waitlist. I will say that I spoke with Dr. Thompson of the Warming Shelter today, and their numbers this week have clearly been higher than they were back in December. In December, they were seeing maybe seven people a night. Sunday night, the shelter served twenty individuals. Last night, the shelter served fourteen individuals. The capacity for that is technically twenty-two, but I did speak to Maureen Tennant, who's the business manager at H3, and to Dr. Thompson today. And Fire Marshal Andy Dotson was at the shelter yesterday in an attempt to work with them, and he is allowing them in emergency situations to increase that twenty-two-bed capacity by eight to ten more, I think, I think it was nine, inside that space in cases of, in cases of emergency, like the, the weather we're having. And I talked to Dr. Thompson about whether she was willing and able to do that, and she said that she could accommodate up to an additional nine people with her current staffing and everything in that space. He also evaluated some other areas of H3 for potential overflow, but would need additional staffing for that if that were to happen. I will also say that there has been a gap between when the day room open, or sorry, the day room closes for the day and when meal service and then, between meal service and the warming shelter opening. And Captain Dennis Smith of the Salvation Army has indicated that he is willing to allow people to hang in the breezeway outside of Hope Cafe during that time from like five PM to eight PM when the shelter opens. They just need volunteers or someone reliable to be there to make sure that individuals aren't getting into other parts of the building. So he is going to work with Dr. Thompson to try to vet some volunteers to make sure that, that that period is covered so that people have access to the indoors when in between dinner and the shelter opening. That was all I had on, on H3. I did attend the Greenmont Neighborhood Association last night, so thank you to Stephanie for coming. The lighting was one of the topics of conversation. I'm happy to hear that, that we have a, a solution in the works for them. And the last thing I will say is that the Woodburn Association of Neighbors will meet on Wednesday, January fifteenth, at seven PM at the Woodburn Community Complex in the old gymnasium. We are again expecting the Mon County Development Authority to be there. I know council has seen the lovely video that they have of the Richwood Project. They are bringing that to our meeting for public viewing for, I think, the first time next week. And we will also have some of our state legislators in attendance talking about legislative priorities. So the Woodburn Association meetings are open to anyone, again, Wednesday, the fifteenth, at seven PM.
Very good. Thank you for the report from H3. It was very thorough, and I appreciate that. The question I have is a follow-up. Is this information publicly displayed available to the public in any manner? And is it posted someplace?
We, for a time, had someone who was posting things on social media. She was one of the Catholic Charities employees through, not through Grace Shelter. She was working in their, in their offices that are at H3. She accepted a position with WBU, so for the last few months, I don't think the social media has been used. But it's my understanding that we actually had a board meeting today, and I believe we approved a contract for a new person who will oversee. We approved the contract. They have to sign it still, but they will be amping up the H3 social media again. So I assume it would start getting reposted.
I think there's, obviously, there's community interest in this, and I, I think if people were able to see where the needs were and where the needs were being made, met, that perhaps would get more participation, more volunteers. It can hurt.
Certainly.
So anything you could do that would advocate for that, and anything that you think that I could contribute or council could contribute, I'd certainly express the wish that that be done.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
The Evansdale Neighborhood Association was scheduled to meet tomorrow evening, but due to the weather and childcare responsibilities and lots of other things going on, the people who are organizing it are going to reschedule it at a different time. That's my understanding. I very much cannot say how much I appreciate, I worked on the issue of transportation. This Raze grant for Dorsey is really just such an accomplishment. When I go to National League of Cities meetings and people are talking about this large grant, that large grant, and I always think that our community with our high number of people who walk, our topography, our, the fact that we're a college town and that we have hospitals and, and so many other moving parts, literally, and also the idea of connecting our trail to all of our, to all of our neighborhoods and business districts. It's just huge to be able to access that. So I just wanted to reiterate how much I appreciate that and the effort that it takes to get into those. And when, I think we applied for Tiger one of the previous times, when you go through that grant process and you don't, you don't get the grant, it's demoralizing because it's so much effort just to apply. So taking this first step and, and throwing a hat in the ring is very important to me and to our community. I'm going to say that I am going to run for city council again. I started off back in the day with my fresh new ideas, similar to other people who are looking to run with their fresh new ideas. Now I have some of the sort of knowledge of how things have been, but I continue to have new ideas and like to follow up on current projects. And so I am willing, if voters are interested, to, to run again. So I'm just announcing that. And I'm going to pass that to you.
Well, very good. First of all, let me say I didn't mean to wet blanket the, the Raze grant. That's an important step. I just wanted to put things in perspective for people.
You're not going to get it right away.
Yeah, well, you know, it's one thing to plan, another thing to, to execute. And it's my constant fear that our budget, I don't see. We've, we've come through a pretty prosperous circumstance that you would never thought of coming out of COVID, I mean, with the monies that we got from the federal government, which we did remarkable things with, which were, you know, very much similar to the Raze grant in terms of allowed us to put us in a position to do things that we had a long time on our itinerary. But we'll see where we go from here. We need to be good stewards. In any case, we'll see what happens in the future. So thank you, and, and thank you for the administration, for all the good work that they've done, putting us in this position. So I appreciate that, too. It's the end of my report.
First, I want to say welcome, Damian, to your current role. And welcome to two thousand and twenty-five to everybody. And I would also like to thank you not only for the snowplows that we're going through. I know I was constantly calling you with questions and updates about concerns people had in the roads then getting addressed. But also those that don't know, New Year's Eve, all of First Ward was without power. And that was Damian's welcome week to his new role. And we had, I was able to have, like, my portion of the First Ward had power, I think, at nine PM, New Year's Eve. A small pocket of my neighbors did not. And I had asked Damian if he could organize a way to have them checked on, and the neighbors reported to me that. And again, this also thank you to our fire department, as well as our police department, had gone door-to-door to make sure everybody had their needs being met, as well as the neighbors working together to make sure that everybody was able to stay warm. And fortunately, this was before what we have as weather right now, so. I just wanted to tell you how much I appreciated that. And I was also messaging the appreciation over the roads being taken care of. And I was also messaging the appreciation over the road being taken care of. For those that don't know, we do not have school tomorrow. I got that message today. If I can let this meeting drag on, because I don't have to work in the morning.
I think that's why the Evansdale people aren't meeting also, it's the third day of kids at home.
But I will stop my report there and say welcome to the new year, and if anybody would be so kind.
We're going to send to executive session.
Sure, we will read pursuant to West Virginia State Code 6-9A4B12 to discuss matters protected by attorney-client privilege. So move and.
I have a motion.
Hoping there's a second.
Second.
All right. Thank you.